We'll call to order the regular meeting of the school board for Monday, February ninth, 2026. Excuse me. Excuse me. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the school board for Monday, February ninth, 2026. Just one reminder, this is not a public meeting. This is a regular meeting of the school board held in public. While there will be time for public comments, that time is not yet. First item on the agenda is the recitation of the pledge of allegiance. Invite you to stand as your. Thank you. One A, the reading of our school board meeting norms. Mr. Manley?
The school board meeting norms are be prepared, be on time, value and respect each other, exercise thoughtful deliberation and conversation, be professional at the board table and when visiting with the general public, speak up when the norms are not being followed, and advocate on behalf of students and keep the community in mind.
Thank you. Item two, the approval of our agenda. I would seek a motion to approve tonight's agenda as outlined in your board packet. It's been moved by Mr. Paul Messino. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Manley. Any additions or corrections? Take a roll call vote.
Flynn?
Yes.
Clevin?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Palmesino?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no, zero absent.
Motion passes. Under recommendations for discussion, three A, school board election process timeline. Mr. Baumback?
Thank you, President Berger, members of the board. Inside tonight's board packet just articulates the step, the process that will follow here in anticipation of the June election. So in the board memo, it just overcomes this. This year, there's a term of five board members who are up for election. That includes those seated by Dave Berger, Josh Anderson, Dr. Sherry Hodak, Joel Larson, and Bill Palmesino. Pursuant to century code, an individual seeking election of the board of a school district must prepare and sign documentation stating the individual's name and the position for which the individual is a candidate. In addition, there's two additional documentations that need to be submitted, statement of interest and the campaign disclosure statement. All statements of interest must be filed with the school district business manager or mailed to the possession of the business manager no later than four P M. The sixty-fourth day before the election, which, excuse me, I'm missing that date here.
April.
April sixth, just want to point that out at the same time here. The election here for the school district, they're operated a little bit differently around the state. We do ours in conjunction with Grand Forks County, so those are administered through. We're in effect there leading up to the June ninth election date. So key dates, just to articulate here, March seventh is thirty days before the deadline for candidate names to be printed on the ballot. An official notice of this deadline must be published in the official newspaper of the county or city or county. April sixth, deadline for candidates to file election forms with the business manager. Completed forms must be received by the business manager no later than four P M. There'll be a drawing for the ballot placement for the order they appear. And June ninth is the election date. These forms are available, so I encourage anybody who's interested to reach out to myself directly. You can reach me at my email that's printed in the memo or my phone number printed in the memo.
Thank you. Reminder, this is recommendation for discussion only this evening. Any questions from board members for Mr. Baumback? Yes, Mr. Clevin?
This is all statutory and governed by state law?
Yes, precisely.
Any other questions for Mr. Baumback? I'll just reiterate the key dates before we move on. You'll see a notice by March seventh. Candidacy filing paperwork is due on April sixth, election June ninth. Thank you, Mr. Baumback. Move on now to item four on our agenda. This is our public comment period. We're about to enter a public comment period. The purpose of the open meetings law in North Dakota century code is to provide members of the public with access to the meetings of a governing body of a public entity, allowing them to observe and monitor. By state law, every regular meeting of the board must include an opportunity for an individual to provide public comment. The law requires that an individual providing comment at a meeting provide to the governing body in writing their name and address. Public comments must be pertinent to the district and may not interfere with the orderly conduct of the meeting, may not be defamatory, abusive, harassing, or unlawful, may not include confidential or exempt information, and may not be directed at personnel. At this time, I believe I have eleven public comment cards filled out. Mr. Gillespie, we have at least one additional card, two more, which I believe brings us to thirteen. If your comments are in regards to the budget realignment recommendation, please know that the school board will be taking action on that agenda item during tonight's meeting. Each individual is allotted up to three minutes to speak. As we've done throughout this process, I will be grouping these comments into themes so that we can gather feedback and information and, in a sense, wrestle with each concept one at a time. So I'll give you the first speaker and the next so that we can be prepared. We'll take, we have several comments about music programs, either specifically or in general, so we'll take those first. First up, I have Eli Stevenson and Tyler York. You'll be next. Eli and Tyler?
Hello, everyone. I'm Eli Stevenson, a sophomore music therapy major at U N D. And I'm here to ask you all once again to reconsider the proposed cuts to the music programs in Grand Forks Public School District. You have undoubtedly heard the issues with the logistics, the workload, the enrollment numbers, and have even heard some personal stories from students in the past about why music matters to them, so I won't talk about that today. I want to talk about what I see in music because I do recognize that not everyone sees music and music education the same way. When I walk into a music rehearsal of any kind, I see people. Now, I know that sounds obvious, but oftentimes in schools, students are reduced to their grades and test scores, but not once have I seen that in a music setting. I've never seen a student sitting in the back of music rehearsal crying to themselves because they don't understand, like I have many times in a math class. I've never seen a student get bored and pull out their computer to do English homework like I have seen in a history class. For many students, these ensembles are the only part of their day where they don't have to fight through a class and do the homework just for the grade. Music is collaboration. Music is understanding. Music is passion and love and communication and community, and it is not fair to take that away from anyone. All of these things, collaboration, understanding, passion, love, communication, and community, are just as important, if not more important, than the number someone receives on a test or the series of numbers that make up their transcript. When asked about accomplishments on a job or scholarship application, I don't know of anyone that would put, oh, yeah, I passed algebra with an A plus in high school, but I do happen to know an awful lot of people who mention leadership and communication and collaborative skills that were developed through music. This is all to say that music is not some extra privilege that is thrown on top of an education, but rather a core part of a well-rounded education that should be available to all students. We all here today are showing you that music in our schools matters to us, and I think it would be foolish of you all to turn a blind eye to the unwavering support that the community has shown. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. Next up, as I said, next up, we have Tyler York and then Samantha Stordallin. So Tyler and then Samantha?
Members of the board, I am Tyler York, and just to cut to the chase, I am here to ask the board to vote no on the budget realignment as it stands. Yours is not an easy task. However, the proposed budget realignment assumes that the only path forward is to include deep cuts to our music program that is exceptional. I believe there is another course. The responsibility to keep the ship on the right course belongs to this board, and you are defining that course tonight. One path accepts the administration's conclusion that cuts to music are unavoidable. They want broad discretion that allows them to do what they deem necessary. That path ensures that every time a budget shortfall arises, music is cut again, slowly dismantling a program that will take decades to rebuild. The other path recognizes what this community has said time and again in this very room. An exceptional music program is not optional, and an excellent education includes it. That path requires clear language in the budget realignment, protecting music from cuts. This is not micromanagement. This is the board setting guidelines for the administration to follow. We all want a first-class education for our students. When administrators say, from a budgetary standpoint, our music programs are exceptional, but what makes them exceptional comes at a hefty price tag. We say that this is exactly how we want our tax dollars spent. When they ask, what is required and what are the things that are really lovely but are things that might be considered extras? Our answer is clear. An exceptional music program is not an extra. It is not a luxury. It is a responsibility. Tonight, your vote sets the values that will guide how the budget shortfall is addressed. We ask that you vote no until clear direction is given that protects the music program. This is your opportunity to affirm that a first-class education, including an exceptional music program, is a responsibility you are willing to uphold. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Samantha Stordallin, and after that, we will have Jack Berry, Samantha, and then Jack, please.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Stordallin. I am a current junior music education student at the University of North Dakota. I'm speaking today on behalf of the university's chapter of the National Association for Music Education. In 2010, I started my education in the Grand Forks Public School System. I started my music education here. My mother and my father both taught in this public school system. My mom at Century Elementary for fifteen years, my dad at Schrader Middle School for eleven years. My grandmother, Emily Stordallin, also was a prominent music educator in North Dakota for over forty years. So this cuts deep for me, as I and my brother are also studying to be music educators with the promise to stay in North Dakota because this is what we care about. As president of our chapter of NAFME at U N D, I feel it is my voice that needs to be heard. Music does not compete with other core subjects. It only supports them. Taking away this foundation of music for students affects them from the beginning. Just this past Friday, I had the opportunity to watch Red River High School's concert choir perform as they were selected as one of the three ensembles across the state to perform at the North Dakota American Choral Directors Association Convention, which was held at Red River. Those programs are not built overnight. They take years of education and years of support and years of effort to get to that level of accomplishment. A child's music education does not happen overnight. It starts from the beginning, from kindergarten or even before. However, making these cuts does affect students overnight. It affects them mentally, physically, and in across their whole school. It is our responsibility to support these students from the very beginning, and I strongly encourage you to rethink before voting on these budget cuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Next up, we have Jack Berry and then Whitney Berry. Jack and Whitney?
Hi, Jack Berry. I'm Whitney Berry. Jack Berry is my son. He's currently at rehearsal at Central. He really wants to speak. I'm wondering if he could be shuffled to the bottom of the pile. Is that a possibility?
We can move him to the end of the music pile if that would help.
Great.
Go ahead, Whitney, and then we will have Eileen Clark. So Whitney and Eileen?
Good evening. My name is Whitney Berry, and I'd like to speak to you tonight about the proposed cuts to music in the Grand Forks Public Schools. I'm a music professor at U N D, a parent of three public schools, former and current music students, a church and community choir director, and a board member of North Dakota Music Educators Association. I've participated in, taught, and observed music education in many, many settings and across many ages. I could speak for hours about the benefits of music education and quote much of the research on this topic by heart. I'm not here to do that. I'm here as a member of the music community to talk about money and values. You can tell a lot about what an individual or an organization values by how they spend their money. Here are some examples from our current budget discussion. Music stands to lose six point five positions. These are teachers in close contact with large groups of students, many traveling between schools to teach. The justification is that these positions are not mandated by the state and therefore extra. Meanwhile, the district employs eleven instructional coaches at the elementary level, one housed at each school, no traveling, minimal if any student contact. The state mandates five point seven five. Firing music teachers but not coaches shows what you value. Coda contracts provide after-school choir and grade-level program concerts for elementary students. The total cost for these in the district is thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. These programs directly impact hundreds of students and families, earn extreme good value for the money. In fact, I figured it out, and the approximate cost for a year of choir of one, for one kid is twenty dollars total per year. What activity can you do for your kids for twenty dollars a year? Spoiler, nothing. Meanwhile, the board recently approved five percent raises for the superintendent in the past two years totaling twenty-one thousand dollars.
Please do not direct your comments to personnel specifically. Thank you.
Position. I'm just talking about position. Is that fine?
Just tread carefully.
Yes, okay. And raises for assistant and associate superintendents and retention bonuses for seven directors totaling ten thousand dollars. The board also approved raises for other high-level positions while knowing they were over budget on salaries and benefits. Choosing competitive wages and bonuses is fine, but you are prioritizing that and valuing that over choir for ten-year-olds. Music has been unfairly singled out and targeted for cuts too many times in recent years. In the current proposal, music is taking twenty-seven percent of the cuts. We've already lost excellent teachers due to job uncertainty and will soon lose more. The current cuts target the source of our middle and high school programs. They're going to reduce participation in orchestra, band, and choir, and thus make it easier to justify further cuts down the road due to low enrollment. They represent a thread that, when polled, will unravel the excellence of the Grand Forks Public Schools music program as we know it, a nationally recognized program built up systematically and with the utmost care over time by the best of the best music educators. This board is made up of people who have personally benefited from our excellent music programs. Even if you did not participate as a student, like our president and vice president, if you've lived in this city for any length of time, you've benefited from the robust music and arts community that exists because of these programs. Many of you ran for the school board, saying that you were an advocate for the arts, but yet after five school board retreats, music is still on the chopping block. I'd like to remind you that you, the administration works for you, and you work for us. Please vote no on the cuts as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eileen Clark. Next, we have Eileen Clark. After Eileen, we'll have Nick Thompson. Eileen, followed by Nick, please. Eileen Clark, are you present?
Yes, I am, sorry.
Okay, no worries. Eileen and then Nick Thompson, please.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm Eileen Clark. I'm an instructor of voice and piano lessons privately here in town, and I manage Scott's Music. At Scott's, we're responsible for about 30% of the violins, violas, and cellos that are rented by our schoolkids, and I'm proud about that. Now, in 1964, I started taking piano lessons from the famous Miss Ruline on Fenton Avenue, and I never looked back. By 1966, I was studying viola at Wilder School under Barb Preston and was in the Wilder Chorus. Now, as you can tell, I'm trying to give you my personal history of growing up in the Grand Forks Public Schools and how that schooling gave me wings. At Valley Junior, I continued with orchestra, choir under James Preston, and played piano in jazz band under Hartley Brown. At both Wilder and Valley, we had daily general music classes. Daily, every day, we had a general music class, even at Wilder. And my teachers at Valley gave me private voice lessons after school just because they knew I was interested. On to Central. I played in orchestra, sang in all the choirs under Al Groatz, and he also gave me voice lessons after school and created an independent study harmony class for me because he knew I was serious about my future in music. I also played piano in the summer school jazz band, which was directed by Ken Larson back in the day. I went on to UND for vocal performance and education, but while I was there, I tested out of my first two years of music theory, and I tested out of my piano classes because I had the good fortune of having grown up at Wilder, Valley, and Central. They gave me the foundations to start college as a junior in my major. Went on to grad school on the East Coast and finally settled in to a full-time career in opera and concert work in New York City and traveling. I've been doing that for 40 years. I'm not done yet, and I'm a member of the unions AGMA and SAG-AFTRA. I've toured with Yo-Yo Ma. I've toured with Misha Borishnikov. I've worked with Joshua Bell, Placido Domingo, Judy Collins, Angela Lansbury, Bette Midler, and others. Now, sorry for this endless bragging, but I wanted to paint a picture for you of how my being a kid in Grand Forks Public Schools delivered to me on a silver platter my career in the performing arts. But that's nothing in comparison to this. I now teach private lessons in Grand Forks, New York City, and internationally on Zoom. I had a couple students with clinical depression, others with reading challenges, a few just had trouble fitting in. Here's how the Grand Forks Schools helped them. A talented 11-year-old arrived at lessons in near tears, week after week, saying they didn't fit in at school, and their parents alerted me about clinical depression. Our lessons did provide a bit of cheer, but as this student became more involved in school choir, they became self-confident. I saw them become a truly happy person. Pardon me?
Please finish up the thought that you're on.
Oh, yes, yes, okay, okay. Now, I'm not going to say what year that was or whether that was Red River or Central, but their enrollment in choir gave them their wings to become happier people. And that student is now studying at a leading music conservatory and is on a career-bound path.
Thank you.
Another student had similar challenges from a brain injury, and again, their enrollment in choir, orchestra, and band helped them excel and helped them overcome their reading challenges.
Thank you. We have Nick, and then next up, I'll have Logan Hartzey. Nick and then Logan, please.
Hello, I am Nick Thompson. I am a current freshman in music education at the University of North Dakota. I would like to speak so then you guys could please vote no on the cuts to the music program. And I'll be speaking on the behalf of music educators. It takes around above 100 credits set to becoming a music educator. 163 if you come to college with absolutely no credits transferred and you need to finish all your general studies. If combine all of the credits into a four-year college plan, you are looking at around 20 credits per semester if you are not taking any summer courses. And all these classes that relate to music education are in music theory, RL skills, piano proficiency, methods for each grouping of instruments, teaching courses, lessons for primary instruments, and maybe even secondary instruments, performing in ensembles, music technology, music history, music culture, music literature, theater, and even student teaching for a whole semester for a full-time job with no pay. If that sounds hectic or insane, then you'd be correct, but it's exactly what music educators do, so then they could come into a classroom full of children that smile when they get to play music for themselves and for a large group. 6.5, that is the number of positions held by music educators here in Grand Forks that you are considering to be cut. These are educators who put their heart and soul into their work, wanting to teach the students of Grand Forks everything there is to music so then they can find love and appreciation for the craft of music. If I've learned anything by being in the music education major so far at the University of North Dakota, it's that music educators don't do it for the money. They do it because they love music, and they want to share that love for music with their students. They go through the chaos of college, managing all the credits it takes to become a music educator, and all for that so they have to fight for their jobs. It's unfair to the teachers, and it's unfair to the students who have a love for music, wanting to learn more about music and Grand Forks. So I encourage everyone who has a love for music, to the music educators who do it all for their students, to the students who put mundane amounts of practice into their instruments that they love, to the parents and grandparents who support their children and grandchildren by watching their concerts, and to any and all community members who have an appreciation for the arts. Let's keep fighting to keep music in the great city of Grand Forks. Thank you very much.
Logan Hartzey, and then we'll circle back to see if Jack Berry is here. Logan Hartzey?
Hello, I am Logan Hartzey. I am a junior at Red River High School, and I am here to talk about music. I have been in the high school music department for three years so far, and it has been the most beneficial portion of my entire school experience. Not only that, but I would not be part of this group without elementary and middle school music programs. Everybody around me has grown tremendously, and these experiences are provided by our teachers and our classes. The main point that I'd like to say brings about extreme recency. As of this weekend, the North Dakota American Choral Directors Association was brought together at Red River High School. As a part of the men's choir there, I spent much time talking to the men in the choir that were not from Grand Forks. Before they found out that budget cuts towards music were possibly happening, they all talked about how Grand Forks has such amazing music programs, from choir to band to orchestra, all around. Not only that, but nearly all of their teachers have come from our own Grand Forks district. The future of North Dakota music, education, and musical growth relies on our program here. When those guys found out that there were budget cuts to our program, they stood in awe. Exceptional students, all wondering why the district, known to clearly lead music education in the entirety of North Dakota, would even consider cutting up to two high school music teachers and programs like fourth-grade orchestra. Therefore, I ask the Grand Forks School Board to reconsider this measure and vote no on the proposed measures.
Thank you. Next, we have, did someone say Jack was here? I'm looking for a... Is Jack here or not here yet? Maybe somebody could.
Sorry.
Not yet? Well, I do have a few that are fairly general in nature, so we'll go to those, and then we'll circle back again. So these just talk generally, or at least what I have on the forms, about the budget realignment or budget cuts. So we'll take Michael Kelly, and then Vedant, and I am so sorry. Sviristava? Vedant? So Michael, and then Vedant, and I would love for you to teach me when you're up here. Michael first, please.
You said Michael Kelly first?
Yes, Michael Kelly.
Hello. It has recently come to my attention that the city of Grand Forks is considering broad budget cuts to schools. Tonight, many of my peers at UND have addressed their personal experiences, and while they are all valid viewpoints and are all true, I would like to bring studies and facts to the table. I did some research when I heard about these budget cuts last week, and I found an independent study that ranked Grand Forks Public Schools K through 12, 40th in the nation. Let us be clear about what is happening. That is the bottom 20%. And now, it is asking you, the parents, to be okay with budget cuts to the school system at large. I have heard about cuts to PE programs. I looked up a study from the National Institute of Health that have said that student athletes compared to non-athletes have broadly increased academic performances across the board. It seems absurd to me that we would allow the system to take away those resources. You have heard quite a bit about the music programs tonight, and I would also like to point to a study by the National Institute of Health that says that student musicians also have increased academic performances across the board, and specifically increased memory, recollection of facts, motor skills, and any subject except for physical abilities, they increase their abilities. It seems absurd to me and to most parents in this room that we would even hear budget cuts proposed. When the government wants money to go somewhere, it usually finds a place to take it from. In this case, it is music, physical education, and education broadly. When everything is all accounted for, every single program exists for a reason, every single club exists for a reason, every single opportunity exists for a reason, and that reason is to farther all aspects of your students' educations, not just the immediate subject matter. I would like to ask the board to vote no on every budget cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Vedant.
Hello, I am Vedant Trivostov, and I'm a junior at Red River. I've been closely involved with GFPS music since elementary school, and I hope to pursue music professionally. My experience studying music at GFPS has greatly impacted me and continues to impact me. I would not be pursuing music if it weren't for this program and the community supporting this program. The many mentors I've had, many of which are here tonight, have had a profound effect on my growth, not only as a musician, but as a person. And to restate, I would not be pursuing music if it weren't for those people and if it weren't for the individualized attention that this district's music department has provided me. My fear, and many other people's fear, is that these opportunities and these experiences which I've had may not be passed on to younger generations. We've had a great number of successful musicians, including Ryan Christensen, Sarah Pugh, Chris Loffler, Brady Rittland, and the list goes on. Without the support of the Grand Forks Public Schools' music department, I feel like none of these great musicians would be where they're at, and I wouldn't be where I'm at without this program. So I encourage you to vote no, not only in music but on everything else. I'm also a third-year German student. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mary Kaponen, and then we'll hope for Jack Berry. Mary, and then Jack, please. Jack, we'll let you breathe for a minute while Mary's at the microphone. It's all as well.
I have my little timer here. My name is Mary Kaponen. I live in Grand Forks, and I'm here to talk about the general budget shortfall. I would like to see this board be more fiscally responsible. I think some of the problems started a few years ago when the person whom this building is named for retired. Different priorities were put in the budget, and money went not towards maintenance and things like that. And all of a sudden, after a few years of putting off maintenance, we had to do major, major maintenance on practically every school. I would like to see more responsible budgeting like that. And then one other thing I want to touch on. The budget shortfall is in some part because of all these pilots that keep getting passed by you and the city. Whenever there's a longer-than-five-year pilot, it comes before the school board for an approval vote. And for the benefit of the people here, I will say the most recent pilot, Brookstone, that you guys passed was for several apartments. The purpose of a pilot is to attract primary businesses to Grand Forks, like a Gristow. But this is solely for apartments, medium income. The base tax is $170. They got a 90% tax rate on the improvements after they're built, so their taxes would have gone up to over $600,000 a year, but they got a 90% cut from everybody, you and the city council and the county commission. So they're only paying $63,000 a year, plus then what essentially is $170 base tax that was for agricultural field. When we have nine pilots already passed, and most of them are over five years, a few of them are under, I know you have no say in the ones under five, but it doesn't make sense when most of our property taxes goes to the school system that you are having to cut the budgets, and yet you keep approving these pilots coming up. I know that there's probably two more that are going to come up in the next few weeks, and we can't afford to keep going at this rate. So I just hope you are more fiscally responsible in taking care of the maintenance and all these other deferred expenses, and can avoid these types of cuts to the music. I happen to think music is important, and that more people contact you and the other entities that are approving these pilots. Pilots are for business development, not apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Jack Berry, and then we have a late-arriving comment card that I will accept, but we do have to limit these to three minutes each, so we make sure we hear from everyone. So Jack, and then Joshua Fisher. Jack, go ahead, please.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Jack Berry, a senior at Grand Forks Central, and I'm here tonight to speak against the proposed budget cuts to the music departments in our district. I've been involved with music my whole life, starting at Wilder, continuing at Valley, and finally at Central. Music has been one of the things that has stayed with me throughout my entire time in the Grand Forks Public School District. Music has given me confidence, discipline, and most importantly, a place where I felt like I could be myself. Music is something that I could succeed in and always improve at, and that has carried into every other aspect of my life at school. For many students, especially at the elementary level, school music programs are their only access to being part of an ensemble. Not every family member can afford private lessons, instruments, or other outside programs. Not every family member can afford private lessons, instruments, or other outside programs. And when music is cut at that level, students miss out on their first and sometimes only chance to discover something that they love. Students are also far less likely to join music later in their school careers if they aren't exposed early. Elementary programs are where most of the foundational skills are built. If those programs are weakened or removed, middle and high school ensembles don't just shrink, but they may struggle to exist at all. Cuts like these make future cuts easier. Once programs are reduced at the elementary level, it becomes easier to justify more music cuts down the line. I ask you to reconsider these proposed cuts and protect the music programs that have shaped students like me and continue to serve as the starting point for many others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Take Joshua Fisher, and then Ivan Kelka. Joshua Fisher, and then Ivan.
All right. Thank you all for allowing me to make a comment, even though I was a bit late. Ms. Whitney Berry was sharing information that is public record when she was told to, quote, "tread carefully." So I have just one statement to make. I think the school board should tread carefully when they vote on these cuts, because if it's not obvious to you yet, music students are the best and the brightest, and we are not easily pushed aside. We are strong, we are motivated, and I will do everything in my power to make sure you lose your job if you vote for these cuts. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate, comments may not be defamatory, abusive, harassing, or unlawful. Next, we have Ivan, and then Andrew Krausnick.
My name is Ivan Kelka, and I teach speech and English at G F C. In fact, I've taught many people in this room. You probably don't have to guess what I'm here to talk to you about today, and that is that I think we should not discontinue our half-credit of speech in, as part of our language arts curriculum requirement. I've been teaching and coaching speech and debate for 39 years, and I know I'm only 38. I don't know how that happened. I can tell you that our district has been a long time the envy of our state, because we have the insight to require a class for one semester. We've always had this class because it enhances the speaking and listening standards used in language arts, and it gives our students a safe place to practice those skills. We don't teach public speaking. We teach communications, which, as you all know, we need. In this day and age, it's important, more than ever, to ensure that our students understand and practice such things as digital responsibility, efficacy, listening skills, responsible research, verbal integrity, and the list goes on. Also, being an English teacher, I'll tell you that those English classes aren't going to be able to suck up the speech time. It just won't happen, because we're testing, we're taking on additional surveys, and doing many things that just doesn't allow us to do more than that. The knowledge and time that it takes to pay due diligence to the speech classes, it would be impossible for every English teacher to do that. I'm fully aware that most people don't like to speak in public. I do, however, tell you that I adapt to what students are capable of doing. Sometimes they come in and talk just for me. Sometimes we add a person or two. We give them confidence, we give them a voice, and we tell them that they can do it. I want to end by sharing a letter with you that I received at the end of this last semester from a student who was pretty reluctant, reluctant when she first came in. Dear Mrs. Kelka, I never really had a chance to thank you correctly, so here you go. You gave me the confidence to speak. I don't mean in front of the class. I mean even just to speak. I didn't ever like to talk to people because I was afraid that nobody wanted to hear what I had to say. I'm still a wreck when it comes to speaking, but you let me have a voice, even if it was just for you. I can finally speak when I need to in class, and I have never felt so happy to be able to speak to others at lunch. I now have confidence, and I can say that that's because of you. Thank you, and stay strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrew Krausnick.
Thanks, Mr. Berger. My name is Andrew Krausnick, Grand Forks resident and business owner. These are requests and questions for public on-the-record answers. All very on topic with the deficit and budget realignment. Will the board adopt a clear tax incentive policy stating you will only consider primary sector businesses for any tax incentive consideration moving forward? Non-competing primary sector additions that create real new jobs and wealth? Not apartments or retail that compete with existing businesses and put a strain on the school district? Will board members publicly state your stance on tax incentives for non-primary sector businesses? Voters need to know. This is a major issue, issue now across our city and the state. The intent of these incentives is not being followed, and the entire state is taking notice. What legal guidance, if any, has the board received from legal counsel regarding the application and approval of pilots? Both as to the intent of the pilot program and also how you should assess detriment to existing businesses? Legal action may be coming soon if needed by us taxpayers. It's important we know what guidance you've been given. Pilot tax incentives already have impacted and will continue to impact the ongoing deficit, program cuts, and classroom resources. Every dollar exempted hurts schools and hurts students. Will the board publicly acknowledge this reality and join the fight against non-primary sector incentives that drain local revenue opportunity for the school district? $50 million have been approved for exemption in the last few years. Memorial Village, Hislop and Fieldhouse, Franklin on Fourth, Brookstone, Olive and Hotel, The Reserve, all for just a small group of development teams. Another 50 million or more coming soon if you continue incentives for apartments and retail. You recently approved a 20-year, 90% pilot for a moderate-income-based housing development. Your goal is major revenue after year 20. If the owner sells to Grand Forks Housing Authority at year 21, it will be tax-exempt, and you will see no revenue. Same goes for when the board approved Memorial Village 1 and 2, 20-years, 90 and 95% pilots. If the owner of that sells to U N D at year 21, it's also tax-exempt. No future revenue. You're taking major risks with our tax dollars and the future of primary education in our community. A claw-back clause or stipulation that was or may be added in future pilots will not help. All of these developments are formed as separate LLCs to shield the developer from liability. They sell at year 21, their LLC is dissolved, they have no liability, no skin in the game. We look forward to answers on the record from the board that serves our students and taxpayers. Thank you very much for your time. I have to get back to work, but I'll tune in online to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item 5 on the agenda. These are, yes, Mr. Cleven?
Is there a chance to make a comment here, or should I wait?
We'll be into our action items. If it doesn't fall into one of 5A, B, or C, we'll, we'll follow up in 6A or B. 5A, this is our consent agenda. I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda in your board packet this evening. Moved by Mr. Manley, and a second by Dr. Lund. We'll take a roll call vote.
Palmisino?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Cleven?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no, zero absent.
Motion passes. 5B, this is the consideration of 2026-2027 Joint Powers Agreement between G F A F B, District 140, and Grand Forks District Number One for Educational Services. Dr. Brenner?
Thank you, Mr. President. You have a memo in front of you. The committee met. The committee was Michelle Shepherd, president for District 140, and also Vice President Terry Snyder was present, and Josh Anderson, vice president for the city board, and Dave Berger was unable to attend. So what you have in front of you are grammatical changes and date changes. With the, probably the biggest change that we made in the agreement is to match it up with our fiscal year, so it'll run from July 1 to June 30, rather than from August into, into the subsequent months. So those are the big changes. I would be able to respond to any questions that you might have. Otherwise, date changes, and the length of the Joint Powers Agreement is July 1 through June 30, 2026 to 2027.
Any questions from, all right, sorry. First of all, comments from base board members or Vice President Anderson, anything to add to that discussion? Questions from board members? Yes, Mr. Cleven?
Just procedurally, without a quorum of District 1 at that meeting, are we required to have a committee referral, or can we take this up as a board without having that referral?
You can take it up as a board tonight. That would be your action item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the way I understood it, too, Mr. Cleven. Other questions, comments from board members? As you can see, most of these are, are date changes. The base board also is moving a recommendation forward at their next meeting, so I would seek a motion to approve the 2026-2027 Joint Powers Agreement as outlined. It's been moved by Mr. Cleven. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Larson. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Cleven?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Palmisino?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no, zero absent.
Motion passes. 5C, consideration of $4.4 million budget realignment recommendation. Dr. Brenner?
Thank you, Mr. President. You have a memo in front of you, and I'm going to go through it, just so there's context and clarity for all board members and for audience members as well. So the purpose of this memorandum is to provide context, clarity, and rationale, as the school board is asked tonight to take action on the $4.4 million budget realignment for the 26-27 school year. Importantly, the action before the board is approval of the total budget reduction amount, not approval or rejection of the individual concepts that comprise the reduction. The district's budget realignment work formally commenced with a school board retreat on August 14, 2025. That retreat established the foundational framework for this work, including the identification of guiding concepts and impact lenses to ensure decisions were examined thoughtfully and consistently. And since that time, the process has included four additional school board retreats, each intentionally designed to deepen understanding and refine thinking, extensive administrative engagement, including multiple meetings involving principals, associate principals, directors, and district-level leadership, cross-district collaboration, ensuring pre-K through 12 representation, and a comprehensive view of instructional, operational, and financial impacts, and a structured force-choice comparisons, requiring leaders to weigh in one concept against another in order to arrive at the total reduction of $4.4 million. This process has been deliberate, transparent, and inclusive, and it reflects months of sustained effort by the school board members and all pre-K through 12 building-level and district-level administration. So clarifying the action before the board tonight, the board's being asked to approve the $4.4 million budget reduction, not the 52 individual concepts that were analyzed and discussed throughout the process. Those concepts represent the components used to reach the required reduction amount, but the vote itself is on the aggregate budget realignment necessary to move the district forward responsibly in the 26-27 school year. Want to acknowledge the human impact. It's essential to acknowledge the emotional toll this process has taken on many, particularly on the content area teachers and support staff, whose work and roles are deeply personal and mission-driven. Every position matters, every course matters, and every program matters. All our priorities within the Grand Forks Public School District. However, achieving a $4.4 million reduction did require forced choices, meaning that concepts had to be compared against one another despite their individual merit and value. No one involved in this process entered it with a desire to reduce programs or positions. On the contrary, the shared preference across the board and administration would have been to preserve everything. Unfortunately, budget reality necessitated difficult decisions, and this process was designed to make those decisions as responsibly and transparently as possible. One important clarification regarding virtual high school, that's one of the 52 concepts. Virtual high school is recognized by the North Dakota Department of Public Instruction as a separate plant, otherwise known as a standalone high school. It was previously approved by this school board as an actionable item, and as such, any action to take the virtual high school offline would require separate school board approval at a future meeting, and is not encompassed within tonight's action on the overall budget reduction. The administrative recommendation, representing the collective work and professional judgment of principals, associate principals, directors, and district-level leadership, and the school board, approved the $4.4 million budget reduction in order to responsibly position the district for the 26-27 school year. This recommendation reflects both fiscal necessity and a deep respect for the people and programs that make Grand Forks Public Schools strong. Thank you.
Questions from board members? Otherwise, you see the administrative recommendation is outlined in your packet. I would seek a motion to, to that paragraph. Yes, Mr. Palmisino?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the $4.4 million budget reduction in order to set up the district for the future, for the 2026 and 27 school year, and it is on, and in the future. I receive a second, and I would speak.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve the $4.4 million budget reduction, motion by Mr. Palmisino. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Anderson? Is there any discussion from board members? Mr. Palmisino?
I guess the reason why I'm approving this, as I said at the last board meeting, we have two things that we are aware of for next year, and one of those is a, is a 2.5% increase by the state on our per pupil payment going forward, as well as employees' contracts that are in place. But when you looked at the future of the 27-29 budget cycle, if you read the article that was in the newspaper here this last week and a half ago, the state of North Dakota is already starting to ask people to take early retirement if they're interested. They're looking at a $130 million less in their budget because of the passage of the one, the one big beautiful bill act that was passed, the same thing that shortchanged us this year of about $300,000 close on our title programs. And their projections, at the end of 2025, they had $1.3 billion that they could work from, and they cut K through 12 funding from 4% to 2.5. They are looking at the end of 2027 into the future, $300 million. So they will be looking, I would suspect, cuts across the table. So I think we need to be ready for those cuts and be fiscal responsible to be able to move forward with our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmisino. Other comments, discussion from board members? Mr. Cleven?
So the motion is to approve a dollar figure, correct?
The motion, as I understand it, and I'll look to Mr. Palmisino, is to approve the $4.4 million budget reduction. Is that correct, Mr. Palmisino?
And I would also like to speak in support of those 52 concepts, because, and I don't think this is an exaggeration, we're talking thousands of hours of, of very detailed discussions, decision-making, conversations amongst professionals, amongst people in the board, board members to community members. All of that is going into those concepts, and I think they're worthy of support, even though the motion itself doesn't seem to explicitly list those as part of the motion. In many, many private conversations, I've said things like, "This isn't fun. No one wants to do any of this. Everybody recognizes the value of the items that are subject to, to cuts or reductions," whatever word we want to use with it. Nonetheless, those 52 items are good work product, and I think they're worthy of support, even if it gives us a little bit of unease in doing so. I, I hope we all can support them as, as an effort going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Cleven. Other comments from board members? I think I saw, no, nothing from Dr. Lund? Okay.
I was going to, but you preempted.
I'm sorry. Dr. Lund?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment. Over the last few weeks, I've talked to some colleagues.
Over the last few weeks, I've talked to some colleagues around the state, and I have three takeaways from those conversations I've had. One is, is we aren't the only school district that's suffering right now. And you don't have to look farther than the federal government and the state government not endorsing educating our youth. We have mandates that are underfunded or not funded. And so if we all want to be upset about all this, we need to look at our governments helping educate our kids the way they should. So that's one thing I take away. The other takeaway is, this process that the district has gone through since last August has been a very inclusive process. Not everybody, not thousands of people, but it has been very inclusive. Hundreds of district employees and school board members have spent, and Jay is correct, it's thousands of people hours looking at this. And these are, and I don't count the nine of us, at least eight of us. Dr. Hodak, I would count as an educational expert, but these are all educational experts. And so I think the process has been a good process, and I really support the process.
Thank you, Dr. Lund. Others? Board members wish to speak on this motion? Ms. Flynn? Or Mr. Larson? They're deciding. Mr. Larson?
I guess Mr. Larson will go. I think it's important. I have a few trailing thoughts after some of the public comments, but what Bill just said is important for everyone to think about. And your advocacy to the kids out there, keep it up because it's important. And other areas of government were funded much more than the schools were. And it's disappointing, and it's part of my daily, part of my daily job is to do that same stuff. And I don't like to see it that we only get 2.5% increase. But it's because the advocacy wasn't perhaps there. So keep it up. Call your legislators. If you don't like them, vote for different ones. But it's your voice and your votes that's going to do something about this. And then we don't have to sit around the table for months and thousands of hours trying to figure out how to make cuts because we don't have enough money to go around. But unfortunately, it's where we are. So as I think every one of us have said at some point in time throughout this process, we don't like it. I don't like very many of the 52 cuts. There are some that I dislike more than others. But I think I'm also in a position where I need to support this because we do have to get back to our budget. 2027 to '29 is going to be tight in all industries. I talk about it in healthcare, I talk about it in other spaces. One of the things interesting, because the Super Bowl was yesterday, but just last week I was in some conversations with thinkers, more or less, and the idea, or the quote from Lombardi was, "Get brilliant at the basics." And a lot of industries are going to have to do that, including education. And I really liked the comment from someone, I wrote it down. Let me see, oh, shoot, I just closed my thing. Look at that boomer. There was a comment about excellence is the expectation, or excellence in our exceptional education is the expectation. And I really appreciate that. And it's probably where I'm at as well, is that that basic isn't where we at. It's not what our community wants, it's not what our musicians in our community expect, but they do expect excellence, and I do want to get back there. And I'm hopeful that with advocacy from the kids that were here and those around this table and in our district, that we can get back there and get the funding right so that we can bring it back to excellence. Last comment, I know a lot of the music educators, and they are excellent, and they're going to continue to be excellent. And I think every kid in the district is going to have excellent education. And so I'm convinced that we're still going to be there.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Ms. Flynn?
I'm not a boomer, but I have to get my thing up here. So certainly understand the need and support for budget realignment, and I think all of us can agree on, in some capacity, that these conversations are difficult and unavoidable. My questions are less about whether we cut and more about how we do so without unintentionally dismantling some of the programs that are currently strong and well-sequenced. I think, especially because we have people who have taken the opportunity to come to our meetings, it's important to ask questions so the answers are in public. And so I understand that we're not voting on the individual concepts, but there seems to be some lingering questions still above and beyond some of the conversations that we've had at our retreats and board meetings. So if you'll allow me to, I have a couple of questions on the specifics that I'm hoping we could have public responses to. A couple of them are general, a couple of them are through, for music. I'll start with the music ones, and then I will move to just the general questions. Last year, as part of some other conversations from previous budget meetings, the high school had, or the secondary music programs underwent an internal music study. That has now come to, as a rationale for middle school music reductions, as a reason or rationale for reducing middle school is that it aligns with the district model. I'm wondering about when a model was decided and how that might contradict with, Dr. Brenner, your comments in one of the previous memos, that the middle school level has not necessarily reached consensus yet as a part of the secondary music study. So question, we have a district model used as a rationale for middle school, but there was a contradiction in the statement that we haven't really come to a consensus on that yet.
Ma'am, okay, thank you. Thank you for the question. That's accurate. Music district coordinator, Jeff Seblum, let me just clarify, because I think some people think that Jeff has full day to be our music coordinator. He doesn't, he teaches all day, and then he does the coordination on top of it. We had, the high school music self-study came to a consensus on what the model would look like, the instructional model, starting the 26-27 school year. And that would be three and a half periods in front of a full class, one and a half periods for lessons, whether that was individual or small group. We met again this fall, I met just with middle school, the middle school subcommittee of that entire group, and that would have included Jeff Seblum and some teachers. And it was clear to me in the first meeting that I don't know how to develop their schedule, so I commissioned them to go back and put together a model and bring it forward again as a concept. At the same time, middle school principals put together a plan for what middle school music could look like. And there's a difference, a difference of opinion about what that could look like between the middle school principals' notion that we could reduce 2.5 positions, middle school self-study committee said we could do 1.5. So they're, we're separated by a bit at this point. So that's kind of, that's where we're at. In the plan, in the overall plan, it's still part of one of the concepts. But again, we're requesting a $4.4 million reduction tonight.
Thank you.
And so, and maybe just to clarify, is there more work that could be done? Yeah, there's more work that can be done.
Okay. So with that, how will the shift in middle school to reduce FTEs ensure that class sizes, rehearsal time, and travel between buildings remain educationally sound?
Dr. Glatch, did you have something?
Yeah, I can respond to that. So the middle school principals worked up a schedule. All of the logistics, we haven't gotten to yet because we wanted to make sure that we weren't getting too far, you know, carted ahead of the horse, if you will. But within the course of the day, when they examined the teacher's schedules as they are, looked at the number of sections that they have to teach for general music, vocal music, instrumental music, they were confident that we could make it work with the recommended reductions. And so I think there's a misnomer out there that general music is being eliminated or cut. That's incorrect. General music will still be part of the sixth-grade learning experience across all of our campuses. So I don't know if I satisfied your answers, or satisfied your question, Amber, but that's...
You did. I think part of the, I think, confusion that remains specifically to the middle school is, are we reducing positions or are we redistributing workload? And would that, in the future, create a program that's unsustainable? And I think the confusion that I've received as feedback, and the difference of opinion is that we have music teachers who offer us a specialized instruction program, and the music coordinator, whose position is in place to be the lead resource for programs and operations for music. And then we have the principals who are deciding that we can further reduce. And so part of the confusion there, when it comes to the board, who, I am not formally trained in music or music education, have to try to determine who's more right. And so for me, when I look at some of these cuts overall, I'm specifically pointing out this one, but as we look at realignment, if we're getting feedback specifically from a couple different ones, that there's sort of a confusion, it's hard, and I think it adds to the tension between how do educators wait by while others are supposed to just figure it out, without feeling like there's input there on the expertise of how they deliver the program?
Dr. Glatch?
Yep, so to answer your question, there will be workload redistribution, that is true. We are bound by the requirements to make sure that anybody who's teaching any given class is considered highly qualified for that. And so then we would default to teacher licensures. I completely acknowledge that somebody could have on their licensure a certain course and not have taught that course for 15 years. So does it feel like they're highly skilled in that area? That would be something that we'll have to take under consideration as we look to place people in positions that will allow them to do the excellent work that they do. But again, those are logistics that we are not, we haven't fully worked through them because I would have been premature to do so at this time.
So are we expecting non-music professionals to teach? Or like?
No.
Just get a certification in music? Or?
No. No, yeah, we have highly qualified individuals, many of them, again, here tonight, that are within our ranks, that we would hope to just rearrange some assignments around.
My next question is, I think I've been pretty vocal about fourth-grade orchestra. I agree, I can get behind and approve 90, 95% of what's on this list. And I know we're not approving every single item line by line, we're approving a budget. But the ask here, with the assumption of approving the budget or the school board, is that we then trust the work to be done, despite maybe some pains that others feel. I want to clarify two things with elementary. Coda has been brought up as one of the items for reduction. And I've heard the term from administrators, the public, teachers, that uses the phrase "Coda contracts." And I think it's important to educate the public and have an open conversation about Coda so that we can just be transparent about that. It's my understanding that there are no contracts for Coda, that the Coda contracts, as it is referred to, is not actually a contract. And so I think words matter when we talk about these things in public. On the negotiated agreement, there's an asterisk by "Coda," and it determines the rate of pay. But Coda is actually requested, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Coda is requested as an activity proposal, similar to any other activity proposal that we have. And so my hesitancy with Coda in some of our conversations is that if we're talking about it as an extracurricular contract, and if we're using that verbiage, and we're just taking apart one but asking individuals to do another, that it bleeds into a potential breach of, you know, the extracurricular contracts. I've learned that to not be the case, that it's not an extracurricular contract, but I think we need to talk about that and state that for the general public to understand. And so it's my understanding also, as emails that have been recently received, that that group has had the opportunity, those individuals affected by Coda or who currently are in Coda, and are sort of in agreement on it needs to be restructured and can have some of those conversations, but it is not a contract.
Mr. Baki, do you want to take that?
That is correct.
Okay. My other question, as it relates to fourth-grade orchestra, this gives me the biggest pain point out of all of the 52 items. I've asked a couple different times, as we look at other models of how other elementary schools deliver orchestra, there are a wide variety across the state. Some who have it in fourth grade, some who start in fifth grade in what's a one-term competition with band, some who have a fifth-grade orchestra start, and some who have a sixth-grade orchestra start. I've asked for any models or data that indicate what a transition period looked like for schools that have transitioned their orchestra programs from fourth to either a competition in fifth with band, or a fifth-six staggered start, to understand if the viability of the program changed, if there were any unattended negative impacts, if there were positive impacts, and how it impacted the trajectory of a student's string instrument usage down the road or participation in music. I have not received anything from any of those asks. If someone has any data, happy to entertain it now. But my concern, as I bring that up, is we don't have any evidence that relates to a rationale of the transition or delaying orchestra that would potentially lead to proficiency loss or proficiency gain or participation. And so certainly we do things that we may not understand the impacts, and we have to make decisions. But that one brings me the most pain because there's really no comparable model. And we could certainly do it, but as it relates to information in the MOU that you read, Dr. Brenner, we have consistency and equity in how we make decisions. Last year, as a result of these conversations two years ago, secondary was able to have a self-music study. An elementary school was not able to have an elementary music study. I don't want to kick elementary programs down the road, and I think administrators would probably have a headache or roll their eyes about, you know, that we feel like we're beating a dead horse with this one. But it's not consistent, and it's not equitable to expect fourth-grade orchestra teachers, or even those ones that travel in between elementary and middle school, to expect that we can have a plan put in place by May, when we're in the midst of parent-teacher conferences and all this stuff. They don't work in the summer, and then they have to show up and deliver a completely new program in the fall. To me, that is not doable, and it puts a lot of pressure on those programs. I don't know... I don't know if, you know, the people referenced recently that we had all-city orchestra come, and part of the participation was those individuals in middle school being able to participate there, and the stage was full. If there's a delayed start, are we going to be able to host something that brought in people from outside and benefited the community? It was a paid attendance, sold out with a waitlist. Are we going to be able to provide students that are academically ready if we have a delay in their orchestra learning? I don't know that any of these questions can be answered, because we haven't been able to look at that. Additionally, I would ask, if we move Coda or orchestra, would there be schools that would be disproportionately affected? How are we measuring that? And how would changes for these specific programs for students impact them who solely rely on school-based music as their primary form of music education? So, I just don't think that we have had the time, and it hasn't been consistent or equitable as it relates to high school and elementary in terms of studying music. It's a very specialized program. I had a, one of the students up here talked about how long it takes to obtain a music education major. I was a residence hall director at the University of Mary, and all of my RAs, a majority of them, were music education majors, because that was the only job that they could hold. And some of them did three lessons a week, and they couldn't count it as a three-credit class, it was a one-credit class. And so, he was right in saying that a lot of them were 20, 21 credits. I bring that up because I think it's so specialized, that I want to trust the administration and the principals in their academic programs, and how they're combing through all the data and research about what we need to cut in terms of a reduction. But I think there's also really a lot of nuances, that unless you're trained in how those programs are delivered and the viability, there's a lot more questions than there are answers. And I haven't got the answers, which means the public hasn't got the answers, which means those teachers haven't got the answers of not whether or not to cut, but how we get there specific to those programs. So, I'm just asking if there is an opportunity, or if someone would say, in this specific instance, because there was not consistency, are we able to have a self-study before we make decisions on the music area in the elementary section?
Does anyone want to respond? It's broad, so Mr. Baki, Dr. Galach, Dr. Brenner?
Board member Flynn, members of the board, what I would say is that this is a process, as we've talked about, there's more work to come. We're going to go through a process in which we gather input from our music teachers, our orchestra teachers. Jeff Seebloom, as Dr. Brenner has indicated, has been involved in this process, and will continue to do that. It will look different, more work is yet to be done. We're going to work alongside our administrators and our teachers to look at that process moving forward. I don't know, Dr. Brenner, do you have more to add?
No, Dr. Brenner?
Thank you for that, Mr. President. I would just echo the Mr. Baki's comments, that there's still work to be done, still detail to be worked out, and our music teachers will be involved, in particular, Mr. Seebloom, who really knows orchestra well.
Do you have follow-up questions, Ms. Flynn?
With respect, I feel like that's a very vague answer, and a very standard political I think that what I'm hearing is, we'll work with our teachers, and we'll utilize Mr. Seebloom's resource, but he suggested one and a half, and principal suggested two and a half. He suggested to keep orchestra, and the district suggested to move forward without it. So, the answer for me is, I'm approving a budget, where we'll involve people, but the involvement is going to be, this is what you're going to do, and you're going to have to figure it out.
Yep.
There are pieces that, there are pieces that we're working on behind the scenes, and it could have something to do with low enrollment courses. Low enrollment courses in the music department at the high school level that might free up somebody's schedule to assist at the elementary level, to assist at the middle school level. I just don't, I don't want to get ahead of student registration and where our high school principals are at, or where our middle school principals are at. And I don't want to unwind the work that's been done. And I'm not, I'm certainly not asking you to trust us that we're going to work through this, because we're going to work through it. My conversation with Mr. Seebloom yesterday is, we'll get there, we're going to work through this together.
So, with that, if we're asked to trust that these conversations are happening, and that we're having continued conversations, how are these reductions going to be evaluated in terms of, let's say we reduce something, or we cut something, and in six months or a year, we find that the academic validity of a program is really suffering, or we need to bring back something? How are the reductions being evaluated? And is there an opportunity to adjust? And who makes those decisions for adjustments?
Dr. Brenner?
Mr. Baki, I'm just looking, I'm not trying to defer, but I know you had a meeting with some elementary music teachers, that might be helpful to discuss here, and then I can take a swing at the other piece.
That was more related to Coda. If you have specific questions on Coda, absolutely. What I would say, as far as all of our programs, we always assess our programs on a yearly basis. We look at social work numbers, we look at counselor numbers, we look at music numbers, we look at all of that on an annual basis. We look at classroom section numbers. What I would say is that's general work that is done every single year, and we assess to make sure that we are providing the top-notch education as much as we can in our district. What it boils down to at a point, as we've indicated multiple times throughout this process, is we're at a point where we have to cut $4.4 million, or we may not make payroll. And these cuts are not fun, these are not cuts that we want to make, as we've indicated multiple times throughout this process, but we know we need to do them. And so, there are cuts on here that we, all of us, don't want to go forward with. But at the end of the day, there are cuts and situations that we need to make, and as we continue to move forward in this process, we will continue to advocate as much as we can to keep as many programs as we can. But at the end of the day, if we want to get to a sustainable point in our budget, we have to look at all programs and assess those. So, to answer your question, Board Member Flynn, we're going to continue to assess them when it comes to the data, the numbers, the membership numbers, the visiting with staff as far as how things are going from a sustainability standpoint. We're going to continue to look at other districts and what they've seen successful. As I shared previously, we gather data from the other four big districts, as far as what they do with orchestra and band, and I've shared that out a couple different times. One district in particular is going through a process in which they've just recently changed, and so, we can gather some of that data as we move forward. But again, we can't, we aren't at the point in the process where we can gather all of that. And so, we're continuing to gather that for you.
Dr. Brenner, do you have something to add?
Yeah, you know, one of the, one of the things that we discussed and we agreed upon with the music self-study at the high school level was, when enrollments get to a certain point, then the instructor gets an assist or some support, and we all agreed on that. And we are seeing numbers trending in an upward trajectory type of, type of level. So, that's part of the evaluation. If one of our band or orchestra teachers ends up with, I'll just use some arbitrary numbers, 120, 140, 160, they're going to get support, you know, in their program. So, and we have, you know, Mr. Seebloom has shared numbers with me. For a while, our band numbers at one of our, one of our high schools was going down, but now that's going in a different direction again. Our orchestra numbers are large, so that's, that's information that we're going to use to make decisions as well. I'm not trying to spin it any other way, other than these are really difficult and hard decisions, and I don't want to, I don't want to pull the thread of the sweater of all the work that's gone into making these recommendations.
I understand that it's a work in progress. Because of that, will, and this might be more appropriate for one of the last agenda items, but would the district then commit to giving us regular updates at our future meetings, as it aligns with the budget reduction process? How, how the changes are implemented based on what is on this sheet? Can we ask questions? And is there potential opportunity for us to say, something feels off about the way this is going, or, you know, we continued support going through here? I think we owe it to the public to have conversations about how these things are being implemented, especially because it impacts their children's education.
Yeah, it's a good question, Ms. Flynn. We don't know yet how this vote will go, or any future motion on this action item, but certainly as board leadership, we intend to direct district leadership to come back and do some reporting on the scope of how these concepts are going to be implemented, how they would affect curriculum areas, if we would ever be looking at a potential reduction in force, as opposed to managing these staffing levels through attrition, so to speak. I don't want to, again, get to that point, because I don't, I don't know how this, this particular motion on the floor is going to go, but I would, I would be very direct, and I think Vice President Anderson, if you want to weigh in as well, about what those calendar touchpoints would be, so that, you know, we expect a report on the scope of how this is going to be implemented by this board meeting in February, by this board meeting in March. I don't have any of that outlined, because I didn't intend to presume how tonight's board action would go. Do you want to weigh in, Mr. Anderson?
I would certainly feel that's appropriate, and to understand how the scope of this affects our students' education. So, I think that's absolutely appropriate to request and to bring back the, you know, how the implementation of this is going.
Could there be some continued conversations where you, and I, I think, Dr. Brenner, I agree with you in that we can't put the cart before the horse with some of these things, because people are waiting on us to make decisions, to, if they're going to retire, if they want to look for a job somewhere, or how's the program going to be run, or I want to be a part of this. We felt that when the virtual high school was being implemented, there were some teachers who were like, I really want to do that, that's a focus of mine. And so, with that, could there be an opportunity where some of these conversations are happening, and there's a decision that's made that says, based on our original recommendation, we just can't get there? It's not viable for staffing resources, it's not viable for, we thought this would cost more, but, or cost less, but maybe it's, or cost more, but it's costing less. You know, could there be potential where some of these things don't happen, or where we do find a cost savings as we continue to talk about these things, or someone hears it in public and says, actually, I have a solution that's maybe not been thought of? Is it possible for some of the items on here to sort of work themselves out? Certainly, I'm not advocating for, one comes off, so that means we don't reduce by that much more. We have a job to do, you know, but there's 4.9 on here, and we're asking for 4.4. So, not that there's a ton of wiggle room, we also want to have a cushion, but could there be some continued conversations where it says, music can't only do one and a half, they can't get to two and a half, there's a rub there, how do we figure it out?
Dr. Galach?
So, a few things that might help answer the question, Amber. So, one of the things that I don't want us to lose sight of is, with a reduction of this size, we are not going to be able to do everything the same. We are going to have to do things differently. And I'm going to, I'll just say it for all the music educators in the world, it would be, I think, preposterous to say, if we delay the start of an orchestral student's trajectory by a year, that they're going to perform the same in grade five, if they had a grade four foundation, that's not going to happen. Could they close that gap with the enriching experiences that we have here? We believe so. But it, but it's, we can't continue to hold on to everything with a $4.4 million reduction. What we do every single year, I think which aligns with what you're asking, is we evaluate our registration numbers, our enrollment numbers, our participation numbers, and we nuance that constantly, irrespective of whether or not it's a budget reduction time. So, for example, today, on the concepts list is a reduction of German III and IV at one of our campuses. If those numbers, if those enrollment numbers tick up, we would look to add perhaps a section back, and make a reduction in a different low enrollment course. We do that anyway. So, when Dr. Brenner asks you to approve the concepts of low enrollment courses, the examples that are in front of you today do not need to be the examples in perpetuity. If music numbers go up, we will add section sizes to accommodate that student interest. And so, I think that thinking aligns with what you're asking. It might manifest itself a little bit differently at the different levels, but that is a truism is what you're asking for. And then, it's our job to make sure that we are offering a comprehensive program that meets all student interests as widely as possible, in the arts, in the forensics, and all the different opportunities that we try to offer on the daily to our kids. So, I think that is part of our strategic mission, and it's what we're committed to do.
Do you have more, Ms. Flynn?
Yeah, I just have the general questions now. As it relates to that, Dr. Galach, I appreciate you, I mean, I know we can't do everything, and certainly, things will look different, and sometimes, different is better. And I think these conversations have sort of also opened up opportunities to look at efficiencies, and how we maybe are inefficient in some areas. One thing that I am struggling with is the oversight of some of the things you talked about. When we get a list that there may be some low enrollment courses, some of the data that was provided was historically low enrollment courses. So, the practice of some of those low enrollment courses has been allowed to happen, either at the building level or the district level. And so, I think these conversations are good, because we can put in internally a process of, do we manage deadlines for enrollment? Do we allow drop deadlines for enrollment? But additionally, one of the things that was on the board's list, that was in one of the PowerPoints when we had our forced choice exercise, the second thing that was agreed upon by this board was that we would be more in support before even a reduction of elective courses, of closing and consolidating buildings. And as I asked the general question of what other options were considered, my question largely is going to relate to, there are buildings that operate under what we receive as a per pupil allotment. Those are very efficient buildings. And then, there are buildings that we operate that are almost double our allotment. Certainly, there's some impacts that go into all those buildings, but if the board supports closing and consolidating of buildings, which also could include the building that we're sitting in, has that been talked about? Is there a process of which there will be annual oversight of building dollar efficiencies based on the administrator in those buildings, or administrators? And where are we at with that? Because there's a zero-dollar reduction in that line, that this board collectively said was more important than elective courses.
Mr. Baki?
Yeah, Board Member Flynn, members of the board, what I can speak to is the elementary perspective, in which we were asked to look at the consolidation and looking at a grade span in a different way, in which we would combine, you know, various under- way, in which we would combine, you know, various under, I would say, smaller school buildings across our district, and look at the grade span of like a K1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And I know you've heard from one of our principals and a few of our administrators relative to that, on whether that would actually be a savings, as well as what would be some of the impacts academically, as well as transportation, and how would that impact the overall cost efficiency? I think you heard from the administrative group that overall, they were not in favor of that, when it came to specifically four buildings in which we were looking at, and combining them into a K1, 2 in one building, and a 3, 4, 5 in another building. The administrative group did not favor that as an option to look at at this point, and said that we would further study that moving forward.
Did you have a related question about MSEC, Ms. Flynn? Was that a part of your last comment?
I just, this board is a part of the process of moving these initiatives forward, and that one was a largely agreed-upon solution, or reduction, or forced choice that has a zero. And, you know, there hasn't been any sort of, like, do we rent out a portion of MSEC? Do we move community high school into MSEC? Do we, I mean, so we give up our lease, you know, there's a lot of different options related to closing and consolidating buildings that had a zero amount, and that was the second highest choice of this board. So if that was a collective decision by this board, and now board members are saying, we're fine with the list while that still has a zero allotment, I just want to make sure that we're continuing to leave no stone unturned, as this board collectively decided that was their number-two option in a forced choice exercise.
Dr. Glatch?
Yeah, I don't think that conversation has been lost. Board Member Flynn, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn here, but when we have discussed the fallouts of what we're undertaking right now, there is a firm desire from, I think everybody sitting in this room today, if not the entire community, for us to try to break the cycle that it feels like we're in, that every couple of years, we're back here taking a look at making reductions to programs that we love and believe in, and they're in place for a purpose. Somebody said it earlier tonight, everything that we offer is offered for a reason, and it creates a high degree of wear and tear. We have to figure out a way to control that which we control. And what we don't control is what Dr. Lund mentioned, and I think Mr. Larson mentioned, as far as the funding that is passed on to us, predictably from the federal level, from the state level, et cetera, but we have enough warning signs right now that we need to prepare for that, as Director Paul Messino said. And so it's imperative that we take a look at our systems that are in place right now, and what we might be able to shift and nuance and modify and change, which is exactly in alignment with what you're speaking to. That was something that Mike Wilber actually elevated in one of our previous administrative meetings. And so I think that includes taking a look at our school plans. Our community has spoken loudly about, don't shut down our neighborhood schools. We know that, we've been down that track before. So is there a way to look at different efficiencies without doing that? Or is it time that we have that really hard conversation? Those are, I think, are the conversations that we need to have alongside of you all moving into the future. But just like I said before, we can't continue to do the same thing with a reduction like this. We can't continue to go through the same cycle every other year. It's not good for anybody, especially our students.
Ms. Flynn, did you, I think she's got one more, and then we'll go to Mr. Cleven.
My last question, just as far as general reductions, is, you know, I talked about fourth-grade orchestras potentially being a phased implementation, whether that's after a study, or, you know, how that ends up working. If the math doesn't work itself out, or it's not efficient or impossible to do, you know, what do we do? Some of these decisions feel like we're trying to fit a square into a round hole, and like we're asking people to get there when maybe, you know, again, I can support 90, 95% of these reductions, but I just want to ask, were there any alternative cost-saving models explored, such as phased implementation of program reductions, shared staffing across buildings, including sharing principals, or assistant principals, or superintendents? Were there staffing reductions such as secretary support that were looked at? Were any other reductions that were not talked about, that as the board prioritized, keep it as far away from curriculum and elective choices as possible?
Does one of you want to recall those conversations? Dr. Brenner?
Well, just through the retreats, everything that we discussed during the retreats would have been concepts. And if they weren't brought forward, then they weren't discussed. We did discuss one of the assistant superintendent, associate superintendent roles, you know, whether that would become vacant or not, whether that would be on the list. I think you heard from our principals and associate principals, the value that they see and the support that they get. But nonetheless, with every resignation, it's going to come a study of whether we can move forward without those positions or not. And we've actually, probably what the public doesn't know is what we've been doing every week, because we have frequent resignations, particularly with paraprofessionals who are UND students, and sometimes we'll have two, three, and four UND students who might fill one FTE of a paraprofessional. Then semester changes, and principals ask, can we hire? Because we're in a hiring freeze. And so executive cabinet goes through those lists every single week, and we say, yes, you can, it was in the budget, or no, or can you do with a half rather than a full? So we have those conversations every week. We're trying to get a head start on not filling positions moving into the next school year. Jonathan Elwine, BNG director, there's a perfect example of a high-salary position that we haven't filled. And Brandon Bonback has taken on more of a leadership role with BNG. Daily Wilkinson has taken on more of a role. Eric Colom, is that sustainable moving into the future? We'll assess that, you know, time will tell. So, but if there's, you know, if there's something specific, Board Member Flynn, that you want us to take a look at, that's not on the 52 concepts, that you feel like we didn't do our due diligence, we can go back and we can look at those concepts as well. The other thing I want to say, I just want to circle back to fourth-grade orchestra, just so I don't lose this thought. One of the concepts that elementary principals talked about was their master schedule is developed over the summer, and it's all prepared for the next school year. You've heard a lot about wit and wisdom, how tight we want that to be from a fidelity, delivery perspective, how students are performing as a result of that, math, the same thing, the science of math, is becoming a big part of our conversation and delivery at the elementary level. So there are blocks of time that are reserved at the elementary level. And so then when Mr. Seblum comes in early in the fall and tries to figure out where all these pieces are going to fit for orchestra, that's a challenge. That's a challenge to find time to pull kids out of certain class periods, or certain content periods, where teachers and principals don't want students leaving wit and wisdom, ELA, or math. So one of the outgrowths of that conversation, from what I understand, is there's going to be some planning that's done this spring, with principals and with our musicians, orchestra band, to see how they can be integrated into the master schedule. So that'll be done before the summer happens. So time will tell how that works, but I'm optimistic that it's going to play well for everybody who's involved.
Mr. Cleven, we'll come back to you, Ms. Flynn. Did you have a follow-up, Ms. Flynn? I'm sorry, did you have a?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. Mr. Cleven?
The use of this building, the use of this building was brought up, and it was discussed, and it was a brief conversation. And my recollection of it was, we talked about it, we realized it didn't make any sense, we're not going to pursue it. I would like to point out the very effective use of our bond referendum facility dollars to build central kitchen out here, that has, by all reports, a demonstrable operating cost savings every year, because of that smart and prudent financial decision. So I hope we can not talk about closing the Mark Sanford Ed Center, because we need this building, it has very important functions, and we've made very smart choices to invest in it. That's my recollection of those conversations.
Thank you. Ms. Flynn, did you have something? Go to this side of the room. Dr. Hodak?
Thank you. I'm going to start, first of all, I planned this out, because I did not want to sit here and ramble through all of my comments. I want to thank the administrators. I think every one of them know me well enough and have had me in classes, including Board Member Amber Flynn, how I feel about education and what I have done in education. But I want to thank you first of all, and to recognize that there will be times where there is disagreement, and that is only to get better. If we don't disagree, we will not improve. So I want the public to also understand where I am coming from. I am coming from a background, 40-plus years in education. My background started with 10 years, I graduated with four majors, speech, drama, theater, English, communication, all of those. So I know exactly what we're talking about when we start talking about the arts. I have competed and directed at the local, regional, state, and national level, one-act plays, debate, musicals, and so forth, not to mention doing student council, honor society, and all of those things that I can honestly say never got paid, what I, for the time that I put into it. I've been a classroom teacher, I've been a middle school principal, I've been a high school principal. I know how struggles, how we struggle to make those schedules, and to make those students get the opportunities that they know. Now, I move on to, I've also been a professor of educational leadership. And in that 15, 20 years, I have done nothing but research and teach educational leadership, the superintendency, and the principalship, at the masters, specialist, and doctoral level. I have focused on school finance and focused on school law. As I said, I've been an educational leader in the state of North Dakota since 1980. I was the North Dakota Director of Schools for the State Department. I've worked in reservation schools, I have worked in the career and tech centers at Grafton, I have worked in both public and private and proclamal schools, I have served many, many positions. Cutting a budget is very, very hard. That said, I do need clarifications, and I do not believe, with all due respect to everyone that is sitting here, that I am seeking to micromanage what is happening within the schools. I am seeking to understand. For my understanding, if I'm not understanding, with my background, I cannot imagine what the teachers and what the community don't quite grasp as well, too. And I want to respectfully remind you, the norms that we say every time we meet, we talk about that my role is to be an advocate for students, and to keep the community in mind. And so with what I'm saying tonight, that is what I'm saying and why. First of all, I want everyone to understand, and I'm looking at principles, because this is what you will be doing. From this document that we have had only since January 5th, which I wish we would have had a lot sooner, we will be cutting non-renewing 24 teaching positions. Now, put that out there for you to think about, if we are advocating for students. Also, when you look at it, 33.15 classified employees will be gone. I understand that we'll get possible retirements, that people will leave, and that we're going to be doing this realignment. I know that, but I want to make sure that you have spoken to that and addressed it. I want to know how you are going to identify those positions that we are cutting, 24 teachers at the elementary and high school. I want to know how those people will be identified. I recognize that we are at this point in time, due to the fact that we have non-renewal, state, North Dakota Century Code tells us when we have to identify and have those. With the exception of 3.5 and 2.0, what positions are these? When we talk about classes lower than 15, and I agree with Amber, that we have had classes, and those classes should never have happened. This is a fluid transaction that has to be going constantly, not just every two years when we are at this point. Those 15 classes that we're going to lower in the high school, I look at those, because I have the documents that you have given to me on student enrollment, and right here, Red River's enrollment classes that are below 15, and I appreciate the data and the information. But there are five disciplines that are going to be impacted by that, but you are saying 3.5 of those positions. How are you going to identify those? So it is more for me needing to be reassured of how those disciplines will be done. I understand explaining curriculum reductions. The literacy, okay, but we've had many teachers speak for it. If we go to a new literacy program, that means we have to train teachers, we have to purchase that, we have to make sure that there is time to make sure that those things happen. Again, I know what you will answer me. You will say, we will be trained, we will use professional development and such, but I want that, I need to make sure that this has been covered. Putting off that math curriculum, I do not accept, because it's only foregoing what we need to do to keep our students academically sound. The reduction in the classified staff, 33.5, from 2018, 19, we have increased our students' current by 314 students. However, we have also increased our employees by 223. Those are the data, those are the facts that have been handed out to us. Our special education costs continue to increase, but our funding is not increasing. Our funding at the state level and at the federal level is horrible. Our funding with our taxpayers and our property taxes from our city is horrible. We have a multilingual education, where we are reducing 2.5 ML teachers and eight ML paras. What is that going to do to those students, that struggle? I know that we have a drop in those years of 34 refugees, however, we've also had an increase of 21 immigrants. We have had a total of 122 students increased in the multilingual students. If we're going to eliminate 7.5 classroom specialists who serve as substitutes for $75,000, that sounds great. However, if you go and you look, that we had in the '24, '25 school year, 13,279 teacher absences. Okay? And you multiply that by 125, or whatever we're going to do by removing this, again, we need to make sure that we understand all the consequences that we are handing out if this budget is approved. Positions being cut, I will tell you flat out, I'm concerned about where those job responsibilities are going to go. I'm very concerned about nursing, I do not believe we should be cutting that position. I'm very concerned about transportation, I do not believe that we should be cutting that position. I'm very concerned that we are cutting the supervisor for custodials and nine positions. What is that going to do to our buildings? Who is prepared to take over those duties and those responsibilities? I believe we have soft dollars built into how this is going to help this budget. When we say reducing overtime, sorry, folks, I've been that superintendent, I know what it's like to try to reduce overtime, and when you absolutely have to go, well, I guess we have to have it. When we talk about increasing the fees, increasing the fees looks good on paper, but it doesn't necessarily- necessarily equate to the student that no longer says, "I can't afford it." And I know we have programs to make sure that every student is able to participate. Our rental charges that we're talking about, yes, that's a good idea, but that also might change people from using our building. For the record, I am against voting on the budget realignment as a whole. I have said that and stated that at every retreat. I am against orchestra being moved to fifth grade, as I do not understand at fifth grade, they're going to need teachers there as well. I need somebody to tell me that this is how we are going to be doing it. I don't see the financial savings. I'm against reducing the nursing. I'm against reducing the curriculum adjustments. I'm very concerned that our struggling students are losing support systems that have been in place. I do believe that we should have had all administrative positions descriptions reviewed for redundancy, efficiency, adjustments. I believe that we do have administrators that, in their positions, are not fully utilized in comparison to other similar positions. I recently talked to a principal of an elementary, and when I heard about a fifth-grade classroom that started out at twenty-four but ended up at twenty-eight, with eleven students that are either on an IEP or 504, plus two autistic children in there, education has changed our behavioral problems that we have to deal with, all of those things. But when I think that we only have one fifth-grade teacher handling those twenty-eight students with an instructional coach that might come in there, with a classroom specialist that might be able to help, but we are looking at cutting that as well. We need to be looking and focusing on solutions. Our practices with developing our budget and maintaining a sustainable budget needs to be reviewed and looked at. We have said that there is no more hiring for two years. Thus, there is no more hiring for two years, including Dr. Galach's position. Because if you take a look at that position, two hundred thousand dollars plus with her benefits and such, I'm not saying she doesn't deserve it or that she hasn't worked for it, but when you are looking at two hundred and twelve thousand for either the middle school teachers or the orchestra, and then a hundred and eighty-three, that would save those positions. We need to do much more grant writing, and we need to explore more of the hidden funding through the State Department, through the federal government, that we have not tied into. And that came up when we came up with, "Oh, we can increase our Medicaid." We must reexamine job descriptions, especially school administrators. I specifically asked for, and I will use it, when I am hearing from current high school principals that they have students that are on waiting lists to get to the cell program, to get into community, to get someplace, that tells me that there are caps, including our virtual high school. There is caps on that. What are we doing wrong if we are capping, but yet, virtual high school was supposed to be cost-neutral, seventy thousand dollars, point fifty, point fifty, okay? So that's what I'm saying. We have not been following our good stewardships as well as we should be. I think by examining school administrators, principals, associate principals, the dean of students, all of the directors, which are top-down, and that's the most difficult part, as I've taught every one of you, to be looking at things top-down. We need to have the teachers. We need to have the custodians. We need to have the technology people. We need to have them at the table telling us, "Okay, this is how we can do with less. This is how we will cut the budget for you." We need to be combining positions for efficiencies. We need to be defining more detailed job responsibilities instead of delegating or hiring. I have consistently asked, "Who's going to be doing this total of twenty-four teachers' reduction and thirty-three point fifteen classified personnel reductions? Who's doing that work?" We must have a fluid and transparent budget throughout the years. We need, and we should have had, on our retreats, at least one teacher that is not tied to any of us. We need to have had a parent on those, at those retreats, even though I know many of you can say, "I'm a parent as well." We need to change our practices. We should have had a legislator, or at least legislators invited to our retreats, so they could hear what they are doing to our public schools. We've talked about a four point nine million dollar cut, and now we're talking about a four point four. I would have expected us to be dealing with that last year when I came on the board with the negotiations, because had we been made aware of that, that we're really going to be deficit spending, I can honestly tell you, I would have said no to negotiations, to salary increases as such. We must engage our state legislators. We must invite them. We must include parents. And we need representation from city government, because I don't believe city government has any understanding of what our tax dollars, our property tax dollars are doing and going, especially when the legislators have put a cap on us. And now we're giving away dollars for those pilot incentives. And I have been looking into those, and as I think it was Andrew who said tonight, that twenty years and everything else, we could possibly never, ever see that money anyway. Those are my comments. I am passionate. I am dedicated to education. I do not believe that we have turned every stone to see if we should be doing what we are going to be doing. Thank you.
Please, please. Once, once again. Once again. I have never in four years touched this gavel. Please, please. Please. Thank you. Other board members? Dr. Lund?
I just have a thought for the school board to think about in July, and I would strongly urge the school board to consider eliminating salaries for the school board members in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. It's just for the future.
Thank you, Dr. Lund. Other comments from board members? Other questions from board members?
I have a few thoughts. I'm a product of these schools. Our children, products of these schools. Our grandson Leo just moved back into Grand Forks, and will go to Phoenix in just a few short years. I care deeply about these programs, these students, these educators. I struggle deeply with many of the concepts in this package as laid out. And yet, I understand the situation we're in. We can't continue down the same road. And so, knowing the motion that's on the floor to reduce this amount, knowing that there's work yet to be done, knowing that we'll be asking for reports back on what this means in terms of a possible reduction in force, recognizing the collective work and the collective pain, this is not a situation that any of us wants to be in. And my last, my last comment is that I'm so thankful for all of the collective advocacy, all of the conversations we've been able to have. I think Mr. Larson spoke about continuing this level of speaking up for public education, for speaking up to the point that our schools matter. And we were in this work together, in a place we don't want to be, and yet I've watched this process from August until tonight, and we have a lot of valid perspectives and viewpoints. We're not always going to agree. In fact, even among district leaders, building-level administrators, we don't agree. It became apparent early on that we weren't going to have necessarily an ordering of concepts, but in order to get to this number, there are a lot of things that we don't want to do. So I'll leave it there. The motion on the floor is to approve a four point four million dollar budget realignment. Any closing comments from other board members?
Ms. Flynn?
If he'll allow me, I'd like to defer my time or comments to Mr. Olson, who's our GFEA rep. They sit at this table for a reason, and while they're not a voting member, I think it's important that we engage them in their perspective.
Thank you. Mr. Olson?
Thank you, Board Member Flynn. It's been a difficult, long stretch. No, it seems to just be longer and longer, where many teachers have been uncertain as to what is going to happen. There have been, there has been a lot of frustration on our part because we have voiced concern, we have, we have brought up issues, those sorts of things. And while the words we say have been heard, doesn't always feel like they've been listened to. We have felt at times like we've been reduced, some of the positions have been reduced to looking at a spreadsheet with a line drawn through it. And the reason we feel that way is because there's been no, there's no discussion prior to that, prior to being informed that your position may be eliminated. In some cases, there was no, any indication that some programs were going to be cut until they were informed that they were going to be cut. So although there has been a lot of dissemination of information, as far as communication goes, sometimes we feel like that was lacking, because communication, I believe, involves like both parties talking, so we could look at what could a reduction look like versus just a complete elimination. It's a little bit confusing for us to understand that the fifty-two concepts that had been talked about this entire time now are, I mean, they're still a part of the discussion, but the board is not really voting on those fifty-two concepts. They're voting on a four point four million reduction. So many of us are left not knowing what is going to happen next. And we understand that, that conversations are to be coming, but now we don't know what they might entail. So to go through this really long process, extended process, in which myself and other members of our GFEA team attended the board retreats to end up here is a little bit confusing. And so as far as clarity goes, it's not feeling very clear. I really appreciate the questions that have been asked by Board Member Hodak and Board Member Flynn, because we have been wanting to ask those questions ourselves and just have really not been able to do so. We've asked some in private, but to hear them asked out loud, we appreciate all the community who have come out in support of these things, because we feel like, you know, this is the Grand Forks Public Schools, and we hope that it reflects the Grand Forks community's priorities and what they want to see in their schools. So we'll, we're, we'll continue to want to be a part of discussions and knowing what's going on, but as far as how we feel right now, it's hard to say, because it is just, it's a little bit confusing now. And I really do hope that we get some of the answers to Dr. Hodak's questions, because those are questions we have wondered ourselves. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Other comments from board members? Ms. Flynn?
I just have one, because I know when we vote, it's a yea or nay. I, I want to support the budget cuts. I've been on teacher negotiations for four cycles. Through that process, we've learned a lot about what a teacher deals with every day in the classroom. I have a master's degree in higher education, where I was also taught by Dr. Hodak in one of my first classes as an ethics class. We had to struggle with a lot of difficult concepts of what we would do ethically. And I thought I had an understanding, having a degree in higher education, of what K through twelve was really like, and I was very wrong. I always thought as an academic advisor, you know, some of these students feel really lost, and what's going on in the K-12 system, you know? How come they're not as prepared? And I think one of the things we haven't talked about is behavioral health and wellness. A couple of years ago, we cut the alcohol and other drug counseling position. And I didn't want to approve the budget then. I had some really, I had a really hard time with cutting into things that are preventative health measures, in my opinion. I think some of the things on this list are preventative health measures for our students' health and wellness, including things like portions of physical education, music. I don't necessarily agree that we should keep all of the music in place how it is. I agree and support some of the recommendations. But my fear is that when we get rid of things that affect behavioral health and wellness for our students, when I worked in higher education, I worked in sexual health prevention. And so I am very aware of behavioral health and wellness change. And as that is increasing and putting And as that is increasing and putting more pressures on our administrators and our teachers, it seems counterintuitive to some of the things that we are doing. I am a minority on this board as a mom to a middle schooler, an elementary schooler, and a preschooler. And most of the parents on this board can say that they have experienced their children going through, or they have grandkids or things like that. So I'm not taking away from that. But being a mom at three different levels, I am very in tune to the issues and concerns of those kids today. So are all the professionals here. When my kids come home, and I go to things like honor choir for my daughter this weekend, who is, if not, one of the only seventh graders selected. And I look in the audience and I see the profound impact that it's having on those music educators who are just overcome with emotion watching this. It's not a selfish thing that they did it, or that they taught, or it's that they're seeing the product of those students and the impact that it's having on them. I just can't get there yet, and I really wanted to. I wanted to support the reduction because I think it's important. But I think we're missing a serious component of some of the options. Will it be painful to reduce a secretary position? Will it be painful to not fill Dr. Glatch's position? I think she has done an amazing job here. Yes. But what I want to hear is, Dr. Brenner, you say, "I'll make a commitment to not hire her position for a year." I want to hear that. I want to hear that we can take a look at some support staff that are further away from the classroom and that we're making cuts that aren't affecting behavioral health and wellness. I can't get there unless I hear that. And the rest of the board might support it. I might be outnumbered, and that's okay. We can disagree. But it pains me to know that some of the options here are ones that could have lasting impacts, and it's harder for behavior change to happen in a positive way if we're taking that, if we're taking away from it. So I just, we haven't talked about that, and I want to keep that in mind because that is one of the four strategic areas in front of each of our seats that we haven't discussed. And if the vote is no now, it doesn't mean that it can't come back at the next meeting. I know we're on a timeline. I know we have schedules. I know we've backdated things. But I just hope that maybe we can consider some additional options as part of our continued conversation. That's all I have.
Other comments from board members? Mr. Clevin?
These are great and passionate thoughts. I wish we would have had them two months ago and we're all sitting in a room where we would have had a legitimate time to work through these. So I'm going to, I'm going to hold myself accountable on that because I wasn't asking each of you specifically to bring out your thoughts, and I apologize for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clevin. Other thoughts, questions from board members? Dr. Hodak?
When we are acting on the motion for this, these cuts, in there, they, it was included, the virtual high school, to eliminate that. And if I was understanding, Dr. Brenner, that we cannot do that. So I want to understand if that's going to be in this vote or if it's off the table.
It's still a $4.4 million request to reduce the budget, but we do have to come back at another board meeting to close the plant, the facility.
So then that means that virtual high school is not included in the vote tonight?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Hodak. Other thoughts, comments, questions from board members? Dr. Glatch, do you have something to add?
Yeah, if I, I just want to thank the board for the dialogue and the discussion tonight. I think everything that came forward, you know, packed by passion, is due to the fact that everything that we have is in place for a reason. We continue to say that. And I do want you to know that when the discussions were going on of what even to be brought forward in the first place, we had our strategic plan in front of us. We had our state requirements in front of us. We had our data, the spreadsheets in front of us. We have an ongoing commitment to serve, an ethical commitment, to use your words, to serve the needs of all children in the best manner that we can. And Dr. Hodak, you mentioned things like caps on programs and why has our staffing increased this much over time? It's because of some of the exact students and situations that you're describing tonight is because we are morally obligated to serve all children. And with that comes complexity, which requires more resources because our classroom teachers, which you mentioned, in a classroom of 28 with all of those needs, need those resources in there, as well as the administrators who are there to help when things go out of line and to set up the structures in place. Education and our educational programming is highly complex. And so we've had, most of the discussions that you've had, is there a stone left unturned? I'm sure there is, and we want to continue having those discussions. We didn't feel it was healthy to bring forward every item that was looked at three ways and sideways and left off of the recommendation because that would have caused, and people can disagree with this, but that would have caused additional stressors across our system for people saying, "What do you mean you were looking at this position, my position?" and unintentional consequences of creating emotion that was unnecessary. And so the hours that were represented at the board retreats that have been cited tonight were set up by many, many, many more hours of really grueling discussions with the people in this room who made those recommendations to you. And so I just want to again applaud you for wanting to keep students at the center of what we're doing. I agree that we need to continue to examine everything, but the things that weren't on the table today weren't there for a reason. We'll go back and reevaluate them and see if there's a ripple effect that is sustainable for us to make a shift in the end. That is, that is our commitment to you. Just felt compelled to share those thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Glatch. Mr. Clevin?
Yeah, if you have something?
Mr. Clevin, then we'll come over to Mr. Manley.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that came up earlier. There is reference to the nursing position and the transportation coordinator position. This is information that had been shared previously, but if Dr. Brenner or Mr. Baumbach can address those two and give an update on those, again, reiterating information that's already been shared.
Thank you. Dr. Brenner, then we'll come to Mr. Baumbach.
Yeah, we're just looking at, we're exploring a partnership for our nursing program, whether it's one position, five positions, all nine positions, to ease our budget. So those are ongoing conversations right now, and I think Mr. Baumbach can probably talk about the transportation piece and how that can be swung differently.
President Berger, Board Member Clevin, all board members, so many moving variables all the time. And one of those is when the list was put out there, not only did everybody who saw the list internal to Grand Forks Public Schools get a chance to react, but so did outside partners, such as the case of our transportation coordinator. We have an outside vendor providing service to us, and they reached out with concern. We had another outside provider, Triangle, come to the microphone, you might recall, express concern for that. And so the conversation immediately began about how can we stick to the, sorry, stick to the commitment of the dollar amount reduction? So we're going to continue on the path of the $4.4 million reduction. That component will stay, but the position itself could be retained. So the conversation is ongoing.
Okay. Let's go over to Mr. Manley.
Just to reset, we're voting on the dollar amount, not on the 52 bullet items. And in fact, some of those items can come off, such as a virtual academy, maybe others. Can other things be added on to that list then?
Do you want to take that, Dr. Brenner?
Way to save some money.
The answer is yes. Can be added on to it. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Other questions, comments? Ms. Flynn?
But can things be taken off?
Did you hear that follow-up question? Could things be taken off was the question.
I think we will continue to work through, through our conversations with applicable folks. You know, I can't say yes and I can't say no because there's too many variables. And if I say something publicly, one way or the other, I'm going to be held to that standard. But what I can commit to you is we're going to continue to explore all options.
Do you have a follow-up, Ms. Flynn? Your microphone is still on, so. Okay. Mr. Clevin?
Thank you. Is it reasonable, this is a question for Dr. Brenner, is it reasonable to characterize that the administrative work that's ongoing and is yet to be finished would cause reinvestigation of that list of 52, to use the vernacular? So again, to rephrase it, the administrative process that is ongoing and will be finalized, that itself is the process that may lead to changes in the, where budget is reduced.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Clevin. Other questions, comments from board members? Just want to do one more sweep of the room, catch you all in the eye. Good, good over here.
As I had hoped all along, want to leave room for all perspectives, want to leave room for all comments, for all clarifying questions. I do hope that for those here and for those listening, while depending on the vote that's about to take place, certainly we may not agree. There has been a tremendous amount of time and effort and interest in this process. It has not been easy. We have done the work because it's important, and the work is ongoing, as you, as you have seen demonstrated through this, through this conversation. So just before the moment passes, a thank you to everyone who's been involved, for everyone who's written and called and spoke and advocated. We hope that that measure of engagement continues as it relates to this agency's work, this taxing agency's work, as well as the upcoming elections for those who will represent you and us and the state legislature and beyond. So we have invited the conversation all along, and we will continue to do so. Any final thoughts or comments from board members? The motion on the floor is to approve a $4.4 million budget realignment. We'll take a roll call vote.
Larson?
Yes.
Pomassino?
Yes.
Clevin?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hodak?
No.
Flynn?
No.
Berger?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no, zero absent.
Motion passes. Before we move on into six, as I alluded to earlier, just one moment, Mr. Clevin, a question that had come up earlier during the discussion, as board leadership, given this board action tonight, we would direct you, Dr. Brenner, to determine the scope of a potential reduction in force, if any, limited to identifying affected curriculum content areas and/or programmatic areas in accordance with board policy and applicable legal requirements. We'll report back to the board as soon as we are able about the cadence of those reporting periods so that we're aware of how those may play out in accordance with our regular board meeting schedules and any special meetings if required. Anything else on that, Mr. Clevin?
Yeah, we've been talking about cuts, but earlier there's a reference to $4.9 million, which included some revenue components. How do we handle those revenue things, or is that another meeting would be perfectly fine?
Mr. Baumbach, do you want to touch on that? Did you hear Board Member Clevin's question?
I did. Thank you, President Berger, Board Member Clevin. I didn't author the memo exactly or make the motion itself, but $4.4 would be what I would consider to reduction on the expenditure side, and then the additional half million dollars identified for increase to revenue. That's where you get to that $4.9 million.
So at some, excuse me, at some point, we'll see those in a board meeting setting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to six. These are other items on the agenda. Six A announcements, are there any announcements for the good of the whole from board members or admin?
Mr. Clevin?
Thank you once again for granting me the floor. There was some discussion about pilots and various tax incentives. At the last city council meeting I attended, there were a lot of agenda items that were, you know, personal or professional interest to me. One of those was a five-year pilot that was requested from a development, bear with me, called the Latitude Phase Two. And I urge people to read the staff report. And those are people around this room and people who are critical of pilots, because I'm going to read from it directly. Quote, "Based on feedback from the Grand Forks School Board and Grand Forks County Commission, the city administratively has advised private developers that market-based multifamily developments will need to stay within the city's tax incentive authority of five years unless the project is unique and a differentiator from Grand Forks." So, end of quote. But I offer this as an announcement because our work here, and I'm going to credit Jeff Manley for this primarily, I think he's taken the most courageous stance on this, and there's others, so if you're not being name by name, don't take offense. And in conjunction with the county commission. So I think this is an important thing to state publicly because we are listening, we're hearing what's happening in the community about this particular government policy, and we're doing our part. Our voices are being heard, and I think we should credit the city for them understanding what I think is an accurate reading of our collective thoughts on the topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clevin. Are there other announcements? Six B, board requests for future consideration. Yes, Ms. Flynn?
I have three. One, we already talked about, but I want to make sure that it's in this part of the agenda, that at our meetings moving forward, we have a budget realignment process update, perhaps a standing line item until we get to the approved dollar amount. I've asked this one specifically at least two times, that we have a representative from the Education Foundation present to our board with discussion on how they develop their priorities and how we work together for raising dollars at the Education Foundation. And then I would appreciate a new item for future consideration. Bill has talked about before that in the past, we used to get enrollment reports. We do get those in some capacity now, maybe not as public as we did before. So I would, one, like that to continue, hopefully in a public manner, but I also would like us to perhaps implement something different in terms of building efficiency reports. I would be interested in what it looked like to have a multi-year report on how efficient our buildings are, and perhaps even consider a metric on how we rate building efficiencies.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Are there other board requests for future consideration?
our buildings are, and perhaps even consider a metric on how we rate building efficiencies.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Are there other board requests for future consideration? We're on to six C, school board meeting norms. Mr. Manley, how did we do?
We did very well with thoughtful and respectful, respectful conversation.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned.